All right, good evening. We'll call this meeting to order for the July 11th, 2024, Apple Valley City Council meeting. For anyone who wishes to come forward and speak as your item is called, please approach the podium, state your name, and we'll be happy to hear the comments. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge.
(Inaudible)
All right, and we have an oath of office this evening to kick us off. I'll turn it over to Tom for that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and our audience. Tonight is an exciting night for the city of Apple Valley. As you all know, our city clerk Pam Gackstetter has announced her retirement here later this year, and we're not happy about that. Pam has been an absolute terrific ambassador for our city, has done so much over the course of her time with us, but she has definitely earned her retirement. So that put us on the processes about how do we ensure a smooth transition. And in preparation for that, we initiated a recruitment process to find Pam's successor. And later in June, city council approved the hiring of Christina Scipione as our new city clerk. She officially started her position on Monday. So, brand-new to the position? Yeah, let's do that.[162.62][162.62](Applause) She brings with her a wealth of experience and expertise. We are so proud to have her join our organization. Before Pam administers the oath of office to Christina, I just want to share a little bit of her background with you and with the community. She comes to us from the city of Bloomington, where she has been the city clerk for three years. Prior to that, she was the city clerk in the city of Eagan for 10 years, and she also has worked for the cities of Edina and Independence, Minnesota, and has a combined total of 18 years of local government experience. She has a bachelor's degree from the University of St. Thomas in Public Relations and Political Science, and a master's degree from Hamlin University in Public Administration.
All right.
So Christina and Pam will work side by side here for the next few months to ensure that smooth transition. Particularly important, the election season, a primary and a general election this year. So there is a lot to coordinate, and I'm just so proud of the way that they're going to work together and make sure that deliver great results here through the balance of 2024. So Christina is a great addition to our leadership team. We look very much forward to her and all the great things she's going to do for us, and we just are so proud that she's here. So with that, we'll call on Pam to administer the oath. And Christina, afterwards, will say a few words and introduce a few special guests that she has with her tonight.
(Inaudible) I, Christina Scipione, stand clear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Minnesota, faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city clerk in the city of Apple Valley, in the county of Dakota, and state of Minnesota to the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.[291.72][291.72](Applause)
Mayor and city council, thank you so much for the extremely warm welcome. I've only been here a week, and already I feel like I'm part of the family. I love local government. It's where we get to provide the most services to our residents. We get to be right there in the community, and to be a part of the Apple Valley team is just really an honor. It's a very well-run city. We have amazing amenities here. I grew up in this area. I live in this area. My husband, kids, parents are here. We enjoy a lot of the things that Apple Valley has to offer on a very regular basis, and so to be a part of that is just wonderful. So I thank you all for the warm welcome. I plan to do Apple Valley proud, to be a good team member, and to live up to the legacy that Pam has left for us. She was a mentor when I first started as a city clerk in Eagan, and so it's an honor to be stepping into her role, and I won't say filling her shoes, because I don't think anybody can do that. But I really appreciate being here today and hope to serve you all very well for many years to come. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
All right, the next item on our agenda is to actually approve the agenda, and Tom, I know we have one very important addition to add.
Yes, indeed. Mr. Mayor, we do have an item to add to our agenda tonight. You have it in front of you. It is a proclamation that is proclaiming today as DARTS Appreciation Day. DARTS is a huge partner with the city of Apple Valley, does a ton of great work on behalf of our citizens, and it's our pleasure to add this item to the agenda. It's item 5A.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda with that addition?
A motion.
Motion from council member Grandal, a second from council member Malander. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda carries. We're on to audience participation portion of the meeting. We have a total of 10 minutes for this section. I did not see anyone signed up. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak to an item not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to consent. Our consent agenda, our items that are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion unless a council member or citizen requests to pull items. We'll start with council. Are there any consent items you'd like to pull? Citizens, any items? All right, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion.
Second.
Motion by council member Grandal, a second by council member Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Consent items are all approved. Let's move on to our regular agenda, and the first is item 5A, and that is our proclamation for DARTS this evening. I would like to invite our DARTS representatives up. And before we... Tom, what's you have anything else to add? I think we'll let them talk a little bit about their anniversary, their milestone coming up, and maybe some of their event to recognize that that's coming.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, council. It's an honor to be here. I'm Ann Bailey. I'm the president at DARTS. I've been there since 2015, and I'm an Apple Valley resident, which is kind of a bonus. And then with me is Linda Engelken, who is our volunteer manager and also an Apple Valley resident. So we are pleased to be here today. I think most of you know that our mission is to create connections that enrich aging, and we often talk about how DARTS helps older adults. And I'm just here to break the news to all of us. Older adults means anyone over the age of 50. So I'm there. A lot of us are there, so I'm just breaking that to us now. And it's good to know that. It's good to know that there are supports out there for us as we run into something that's different. Age is just a number until you have a health or an economic situation that makes it a barrier. And so we are awfully glad that we are able to be a part of this city. We're grateful of the partnership that we have with the city of Apple Valley. You have supported chores services for the residents of Apple Valley for years and years, long before I was at DARTS. And the people that we help very much appreciate the service that we're able to provide because of those dollars being allocated to that use. So thank you very much for the invitation to be here this evening.
Before we move on, you've got a 50th birthday event coming on, and to me, if we want to do this, if we can on the fly get the camera up on the podium, we probably can pop this right next to where Lindy's standing and get a shot of it, so.
Probably on those green marks, I guess.
Yeah.
So yes, DARTS, yep, DARTS is turning 50 this year, so we also qualify for our own services. And we are celebrating turning 50 on August 1st, and we will be at the event center at Emerald Green that's called the Wexford. It will be a great fun evening. There's a ticket to purchase online at the DARTS website, dartscanex.org, if you want to register to come or to just do the silent auction. And it will be a super fun way to celebrate aging in general and to commemorate the first 50 years and wish us well for the next 50 years.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. I will read this proclamation, and I'm going to make sure I give you your copy this evening. So proclamation reads, "Whereas the city of Apple Valley is committed to providing residents access to a high quality of living as they age in their communities, and whereas nearly 1 in 3 Minnesotans are above the age of 55, and whereas since 1974, DARTS has served older adults, their families, and caregivers with the mission of creating connections that enrich aging and empowering independence. And whereas in 2024, DARTS is celebrating its 50th anniversary of providing services for older adults across the southeast metro, including Apple Valley. These services include housework, outdoor chores, home repairs, caregiving resources, resource connections, fulfilling volunteer opportunities in transportation, and whereas the first DARTS service in 1974 was bus rides transporting older residents to area community education classes. And for many years, they have partnered with the city of Apple Valley to provide home chores for our residents. And whereas the city of Apple Valley has partnered with DARTS since 2017 and provided over 4,600 hours of assistance, helping over 50 older adults with over 1,700 home cleaning visits, 650 long food, 100 seasonal cleanups, and with over 80% of these clients at or below 200% of the federal poverty level. And whereas DARTS' ongoing commitment to collaboration, excellence, inclusion, responsibility, and service in its communities has helped ensure the community is receiving the support it needs. And whereas volunteer dedication has allowed DARTS learning buddies and pen pal programs to reach more than 80,000 students, connecting older adult volunteers with local classrooms for intergenerational learning experiences. And whereas the city of Apple Valley celebrates the 50th anniversary of DARTS and the many services it has long provided our aging residents, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Apple Valley, Dakota County, Minnesota, hereby recognizes and thanks DARTS President Ann Bailey and the many employees and volunteers who dedicate their time to help Apple Valley residents thrive, hereby proclaims the 11th of July 2024 as DARTS Appreciation Day in Apple Valley." Do I have a motion to approve?
A motion.
Second.
That's a lot all at once. We'll say a motion from council member Goodwin and a second from council member Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No, you're opposed. You said you're opposed.[787.12][787.12](Laughter)
He's just delayed. He's good. All right. Thank you all that carries, and thank you for coming out this evening.
We can't take him anymore.
As well. Thanks for all you guys do for Apple Valley, too.
Thank you very much.
All right, as we move on, I'm going to invite Luke Fisher up and talk a little bit about... I'm not going to turn this one over to Tom, because that would just be really strange to do, but we had the honor just a few short days ago of recognizing Tom Lawwell with a well-deserved and well-earned reward, and I won't steal Luke's thunder, but why don't I turn it over to you, and you can walk us through a little of what happened?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the chance to be here tonight. I'm Luke Fisher. I'm executive director at the League of Minnesota Cities, and I'm joined by a colleague and a friend, and one of our board members, Phil Curran. He's the Delano City Administrator. We're going to share the lift tonight to share some good news about Tom. But I always think when we come out to city council chambers to offer some recognition of important people or projects, you oftentimes know who we are, but everybody doesn't get to know who we are. So if it's all right with you, I'll share just a little bit of context about who we are as an organization. I think that's helpful and important, and helps underscore just how big of an award and accomplishment this is for Tom. So the League of Minnesota Cities is an association. We represent 839 of the state's 855 cities. You can probably guess our largest member. Anyone?
It's not Apple Valley.
It's not Apple Valley. It's Minneapolis, right? But our smallest member is the city of Berry. Are there any guesses on Berry's population?
Hmm, 700.
How many?
700.
700. It's a little bit lower than that.
Oh.
Seven.
Seven. Did you have a guess?
50.
50? All right. If we're playing Price is Right rules, council member Grandal's in, and you are all council member Malander. You have a population of just 19 people.
Oh, my goodness.
And so when we think about what we do as an organization, as an association, we have to serve members that are like Minneapolis, like Apple Valley, and like Berry, Minnesota, way out on the western edge of the state. And we do that in a myriad of ways that you know. We're a research... We have a research hotline that our members can call with questions. We answer like 5,000 research inquiries every year. We have an HR hotline that handles 2,000 questions a year. We see 2,500 people in a training conference or event, and we see... We handle about 8,500 insurance claims. That's all to say, like, we've seen a lot of really good things. We've seen some things that maybe could be improved, but one of our favorite things to do is recognize people that are the best, and that's what we're here to do tonight, in our recognition of Tom. We've seen everything, and we know that he is an exemplary city manager, and it's worth the recognition. Before I turn it over to Phil to do that, though, I also want to take just a moment to thank the city council, the people sitting at this dais, for all that you've done to help the league, to contribute to the league, and to make us a better organization over time. You were on the league board, right? Mayor, we see you at policy committees. Council member Grandal, you're active at the National League and all over the place.
She's a big wheel.
She is. Absolutely a big wheel. And everybody... What we found with our members is everybody contributes in their own ways. They come to conferences. They come to things. They expand their knowledge, and they share with others, too. And we just want to express some gratitude for you for being active participants with us always. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Phil to do the fun part.
Thank you, Luke. Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for having me here tonight, having Luke here tonight to present this award to Tom. It was presented to him first at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference in Rochester, as you know. The Leadership Award is the league's highest honor for appointed city officials. And as Luke mentioned, 839 cities, there are many, many, many appointed officials across the state of Minnesota doing great work. And this award is presented in recognition of outstanding leadership in public service and dedication to the community. The award is named for former executive director James F. Miller, who led the league for 22 years and served a number of communities himself in professional service in Minnesota. We're fortunate to serve as the home of, as I said, many outstanding public servants who are dedicated to working in local government. For the second year in a row, we had a record-breaking number of nominations submitted for this award, and Tom stood out above the rest among an outstanding field. His contributions to the community are perhaps best summed up by a paragraph that appears in the city's award nomination letter. It reads, "Tom's comprehensive expertise in economic development, strategic planning, intergovernmental relations, financial management, human resources, transportation, and public safety has empowered him to drive the organizations he leads towards fiscal stability, enhanced collaboration, and rigorous accountability. His enduring legacy is a testament to his unwavering dedication to service and excellence in local government." Tom's leadership extends beyond the boundaries of your city hall as well. He has served on the league's Fiscal Futures Policy Committee for nearly 25 years. In doing so, he helps define and advance league legislative priorities and policies that consistently keep our state's cities financially and fiscally responsible. We've heard over and over from conversations with individuals featured in a video that you'll be seeing in just a minute, describing Tom's inspiring work with the Rotary Club of Apple Valley in leading and participating initiatives both locally and globally, from highway cleanups to book donations to international campaigns against polio and efforts to improve water access. In his decades of work, he's earned the admiration and respect of his peers and colleagues, not only in Dakota County and the Twin Cities metro area, but throughout the entire state. He can... Through letters of support accompanying Tom's nomination, and I can attest as well, he is well-known in our profession as being supportive, selfless, impactful, gifted, kind, and a good friend to many. Folks that live, work, and visit the city are fortunate that Tom chose Apple Valley and certainly fortunate that Apple Valley also chose Tom. So let's hear a little more. We're going to play a video that was shared at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference that further highlights Tom's award and service.
Tom is deserving of the James F. Miller Leadership Award because of his longevity as a city administrator over the past 25 years, his stability over a number of mayors, city council members, and growth of a community that really can't be matched in many parts of the Twin Cities.
Tom is always able to have an easy conversation with people about why things are the way they are, who they need to talk to, how they get their issue resolved, but always leaves people feeling like they were listened to, their concerns were heard, and that there will be a resolution, or at least somebody who cares about their issue.
One of the things that I'm very grateful for about with Tom Lawwell is that he understands the importance of the greater good of a society and of a community.
Having a long-term leader like Tom be involved in the Apple Valley community has been stabilizing force for all the growth that Apple Valley's had over the preceding 20 years.
We built a municipal center that was architecturally green, energy efficient, and under Tom's leadership, all of the buildings that we built during that time were energy-efficient and Green Globe certified.
Tom has been instrumental in making sure that we're looking out far enough into the future to accurately plan what we need, to have our needs covered, and to avoid the ups and downs that might come with big tax increases in one year. That financial stability has been important for our homeowners, for our residents, but also for our business community, and delivering the services we need at a reasonable cost.
And under Tom's leadership, he saw that when we were a AAA bond-rated city, that the money that we would borrow would be at a better interest rate, and then we could do more for our community.
Tom's always had a passion for the community, and not as a vocal cheerleader standing in front of everyone, but that strong support for the community and everything we're doing.
Tom, congratulations for a tremendous job, and more importantly, thank you. I am grateful from the bottom of my heart for you being my friend all these years.[1344.58][1344.58](Applause)
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and council, thank you for the opportunity to present this here tonight to Tom. Congratulations, Tom, on behalf of the League of Minnesota Cities, and certainly all of us in local government across the state of Minnesota. Congratulations.[1375.15][1375.15](Applause)
Just, you know, this is a lot, right? You all have been so good to me over the years, and this is certainly something not expected. It was a big surprise in Rochester at the conference. Many of you made the trip down to be part of it. Without me knowing anything about it, you all arrived down there and were part of that, along with many of our staff members, some fellow Rotarian members were there as well. So just thank you for a great night there. And to echo that again here today, I just want to thank Luke and Phil for coming out and doing this and putting a spotlight on this. You know, obviously, I don't do any of this by myself. I mean, you as the council have been so supportive and so collaborative. I'm sure Luke could tell stories of city councils elsewhere in the state that maybe don't work as well and row the same direction quite as well as you all do. We are so blessed to have you all and doing what you do. And then, obviously, the thing to remember about trying to be successful is to surround yourself with great people. And I've certainly been able to do that. Our staff is second to none. They do so much great work, and obviously, when you have that many stars around you, it shines very bright on all of us. So thank you for the recognition. Thank you for the highlight of the great work that's going on in the city of Apple Valley. I will always remember this and look forward to many more years of helping you all, all of us serve our citizens here in the community. So thanks again.
Thank you.[1472.26][1472.26](Applause) (Inaudible)
We've got to do a picture.
So we have Charles ready with the camera. We need to get that picture. Are you up for getting the front job, or are you good?
Let's go. We'll get people down here in front so we have a little better picture, but as long as we have everyone here.
It's a classic city administrator move to quickly get out of the way before Ann was coming. So that's why he's the best, right? There's no question.
World would be like this.
Right? You want this picture in the picture? Yeah, let's get the picture in there.
I'm not used to being in the middle.
I know. It's totally awkward, isn't it?
(Inaudible)
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
(Inaudible)
Thanks, everybody.
Better.
And Luke, be sure to thank Don Forrest for all of his work in putting that video together and all the coordination. I know he and team did an awful lot of work behind the scenes on all those awards this year, and fantastic production job and coordination.
I've got to say, our staff loved putting this together. Loved telling the story.
They were great to work with, too. Thank you.
Thanks.
Council member Goodwin.
I made a comment the other night at the presentation. This is the relationship I've had with this guy over all the years. I stopped him one time last year, and I said, now wait a minute. Are you the boss, or am I the boss? And he was nice enough to say, well, you're actually the boss, Mr. Goodman, which I thought was nice.
Which is true.
But what an excellent city administrator. He's just perfect. Just the sir is.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Before we make Tom any more uncomfortable, we probably should just move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a resolution providing a competitive negotiated sale of general bond obligations. And Ron's going to talk about these.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor introduced, we have before us this evening some process that kicks off the issuance of bonds this coming year. And we thought typically we would do these... They would be a lot smaller, and we would do them on consent just the start of the process. And this is really for the public, just kind of keeping everybody informed of where we're going with this. There's a bond issue coming up this year. It'll be in August. It'll be $26,495,000. It's made up of two pieces. One is the capital improvement plan bonds, $10 million for that, and this is funding not just the fire station, remaining pieces of the fire station number two, and improvements to the other fire stations, but also the upcoming police operations building over on Flagstaff, and also the CMF project that'll be coming down the line. And these will be, you know, covered in the moment, but parts of an ongoing project over the next few years, as well as the park referendum bonds, $16.3 million. That'll be issued this year. That'll be used for the initial start of the projects improved by the city citizens last year in the park referendum. We do have an issuance calendar this evening, and of course, there's a resolution that just sets the date of sale and starts the ball rolling to do that. The week of July 22nd, we'll do the rating calls with Moody's and Standard and Poor's. Should have the rating reports back in July, at the end of July, rather, and then a bond sale and award on August 8th, in which case the proceeds would be available for spending as of the end of August or the 29th of August. We have been expending dollars towards the referendum, of course, already, and we did a reimbursement resolution. So we have been, let's say, the general fund has been fronting some of the costs to date associated with that. So that general fund would be reimbursed out of the first issuance of the proceeds. The park referendum bonds, the city council fortunately, just at the informal meeting this evening, heard some... A discussion about some of the improvements. But for the public, this would include the redevelopment of Redwood Park, including the replacement of the community pool, development of Kelly Park, improvements at the Aquatic Center, the Community Center, the Senior Center, Hayes Arena. Improvements at the Aquatic Center, the Community Center, the Senior Center, Hayes Arena. The development of the Hayes Youth Baseball and Softball Complex and of course, parks and trail improvements throughout the community. Referendum last fall included $73.25 million of authorization for parks referendum projects. This issue is for 16 million of that, 73 million. And the remainder will be issued over the next two to three years. The capital improvements portion of the bonds, just over 10 million, funds a number of the projects that, that I mentioned. Including the police operation garage facility, some improvements at the Johnny Cake East facility, CMF improvements, the fire station. Total use that were authorized in the capital improvement plan last year in 23 to 28, capital improvement plan. 41 million of that will be issued over the next two to three years, four years possibly, all depending on spending. That authority will expire in four years and if, so we will be issuing it over that time. 14, these bonds, 14 million, as I mentioned, the capital improvement plan, we issued in 2021 and 2022, 14 million under previous authority. The 21 through 25 CIP. And then we are gonna be issuing 10 million this, in 2024, under the 2023 through 27 authority. Leaving another 30 mil, up to 30 million, 800,000 that would be issued in 25, 26 or 27 under that previously mentioned authority. As I mentioned, over the coming years, we'll be issuing 73.2 million for, towards the bond, park bond referendum projects. And then 41, up to 41 million for a capital improvement bond, plan bonds over the next, again, over the next four or five years. The, I mentioned the issuance calendar earlier, so, but the set sale, the resolution this evening sets the whole ball of, the whole ball in process. And we'll start this process and be back for a bond sale potentially, bond sale and council award on August 8th. The resolution provides for the competitive negotiated sale of up to 26,495,000 of general obligation series 24A. And it also provides for Northland Securities to serve as our municipal advisor and TAF to stand in Hollister as legal counsel, bond counsel rather. And with us this evening, I forgot to mention Tammy Umdoll, our advisor at Northland Securities, is here if we have any questions about some of the details in the bond issue. And with that, we are available for any questions or consideration of the resolution.
Councilmembers, any questions? With that, we would look for a motion to adopt the resolution.
A motion.
A motion from Councilmember Goodwin, a second from Councilmember Malander, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries, thank you all. We're onto staff and council communications, Tom, anything additional?
Mr. Mayor, the only one I would comment on, you already have, which is the Freedom Days activities. And just a huge thank you to all of the different departments that made that possible. I know the best laid plans had to be changed in the middle of the show, if you will, and Police Department, Fire Department, Parks Department, Public Works Department and many others that chipped in to make that big success. So thank them all for the hard work and the extra hours that they put in to, to do that. We really appreciate all they've done.
Yes, agree, thank you. Councilmember Goodwin?
Yes, I have a communication, it's not about the city, it's about something I think that's very important to the city. I just wanted to bring it up for a second. A month or so ago, our local newspaper, Dakota County Tribune, announced that because of the changes in their financial situation, that they're gonna have to go to a subscription service. And I just want to say personally, as a council member, who's been a council member for 40 years. I can't tell you how important the small community paper is to a city. We have three neighboring cities, Prior Lake, Savage, who else? Prior Lake, Savage and one other. They've lost their newspapers and I just feel terrible about it. I can tell you personally, did I subscribe, you bet I did. And I think everybody in the city that wants local news coverage should think about it. I'm not gonna tell you what to do. But my prescription is for three years and it costs me 46 cents a week and that's pretty good. Minneapolis Star Tribune, Pioneer Press cannot cover all the cities. And if we lose our, lose our local city newspaper, I know some people may not read it, I don't know. But I just think it's essential to a community to keep a local paper and that's my comments, sir.
Thank you. Any other council member comments? All right, if not, we are on to the calendar of upcoming events. Our next regular city council meeting is Thursday, July 25th at 7:00 PM. Do we have a motion to approve the calendar of upcoming events?
A motion.
Motion from Councilmember Grandal, a second from Councilmember Bergman, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that carries, do we have a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Bergman, second from Councilmember Grandal, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you.